Okay, so, roll call please Carol.
Jim Batson, Kara Benjamin, Don Carmichael,
Here.
Cara Drumke, Lisa Hessel,
Here.
Middleish Cotwell,
Here.
Sonal Kulkarni.
Here.
We do have a quorum although we expect Cara to show up. We knew that Jim was not going to be here this evening. Okay, first order of business under communication is student recognition. It looks like I'm turning this over to our esteemed principal.
Thank you.
Gilliam.
John Gilliam, principal of Vernon Hills High School, welcome. It's always fun to be able to recognize students who have performed well. We have the fall season wrapped up and so we, over the next few weeks, will have more students to recognize. Tonight, we have, in my 11 years as principal of Vernon Hills High School, maybe the most decorated athlete in terms of the number of times she's been at this board meeting, or a board meeting. Libby Tron is a senior this year, so wrapping up her fine career in both diving and gymnastics. Tonight, I'm going to invite out her dive coach, Coach Tanner, to come up and speak a little bit about her career and her excellent season. Come on up, Coach.
Hello, I'm Coach Tanner. I've been coaching here for three years, so been coaching Libby since her sophomore year. And even when I got there, we had like a really good team with a lot of good members. But Libby had like such an amazing year that she was able to be one of our top divers making it to state. But she's such a kind girl that she was told me like after the meet concluded, she's like, "I want to give my spot up to our upperclassmen," because we had two seniors. So, you know, she's been an incredible athlete, but also has some great character. And then these past two years, we were both able to make it to the state meet and to the state final, which is a really challenging thing to do. And especially with all her time doing gymnastics. So normally like everyone will be in the pool for two hours, but a lot of the time she might have something that she has to get to. So she didn't even have as much time as everybody else, but still able to, you know, pull up some great dives and really impress all the judges and be able to make it very far in her four years here diving at Vernon Hills. Yeah.
Congratulations.
Should we get a picture?
We'll get a picture of these guys.
Usually.
Where would you like it?
All right, congratulations. And we're moving on to an invitation for public comment. There's nobody on the sign-in sheet, but don't let that hold you back. Please.
Good evening, John Hetzel. Happy holidays to everybody. I hope the season's going well. Tonight, I just wanted to address one thing in particular after spending the last few weeks having conversations with several parents in the community, as well as many community members on both sides of Libertyville and Vernon Hills. There seems to be a lot of concern that is, and even specifically as late as, or as early last week, a couple of the board members expressed that the incoming candidates, the seven candidates that are running for the five seats, would not have an opportunity to meet with the potential superintendents. I think that would be a terrible error on this board's part, especially when it's being driven by a couple people, if not four. Two of them spoke up last week and said that wasn't necessary. That's incorrect. It is necessary. These are the people that are going to be helping oversee this district and the superintendent for the next four years. We've already seen what a quorum of four brought into our district in particular with Denise Herman. And there wasn't good vetting at that time. What gives us the confidence or the trust that that will happen this time? It set us back quite a bit, not only with the teachers, the students, the community, and the parents with that decision. I think it's time that this particular school board and some of these people realize that it's very important, very important, for the incumbent, the incoming candidates to have an opportunity to meet with potential new superintendents. Thank you.
Very good. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? Okay, seeing none, I will move on to the teacher union report.
All right, good evening, everyone. I'm Paul Carnstett, secretary of the D-128 Federation of Teachers. As always, we appreciate this time to address the board. So as you're likely aware, it's finals week. It's a time filled with mixed emotions for our students. We see a lot of different things during this time in our spaces in which we support our students. There's excitement about a well-deserved break approaching. We see some panic, so students waiting till the last minute to do that last retake or turning in that last missing assignment. We see some focus, students spending their review time diligently preparing for finals. And we see some exhaustion. Frankly, some of our students need a break right now. And we see stress, because after all, this is when final grades for first semester are about to be finalized. Our members are working, so when I say our members, I mean teachers, counselors, social workers, nurses, et cetera. Everybody under our membership are working hard to support our students during this time, taking extra time to contact parents, taking extra time to help students with review questions, staying late to grade those last assignments coming in. I just want to highlight all those little things that our members are doing in crunch time here to support our students and thank all the members that might be listening for their hard work. One event that we take a lot of pride in, our union, is our final exam study night. We have collaborated with Cook Memorial Library over the years to host a study night at both the Cook Park and Aspen locations, in which our teachers are available after school for two hours to provide drop-in help, as well as snacks for our students the Monday before finals. If your wheels are turning with your calendar, that means that event took place earlier today. I actually came over from there. It was a packed house. I was at the Libertyville location and it was standing room only, or there are teachers sitting on the floor helping students. It was hard to get an estimate for numbers because people were all over the place. But between the two branches, we can report that about 30 teachers helped around 250 students. So we want to thank our partners at Cook Memorial Library for hosting. We also want to thank members Sarah Gorley, Diane Nasland, Jason Rush, and Katie Bakker for their individual work in organizing and promoting another successful study night. Thank you as always for your time, and we'd like to extend you all our best wishes for happy holidays, happy new year, and a restful winter break. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Paul. I have been to that event before, and I can tell you that it is exactly, you've nailed it, the kids are both nervous and excited. It's great that the teachers are doing that, so thank you to the union. All right. We do not have an Educational Support Professionals Union report this evening, so now I will review the agenda. Next up, we will be hearing from our student school board representative reports, FOIA requests, and then the superintendent's report. We will then go to the consent vote agenda. There are several items for action this evening: employment of employees, educational tour requests, the summer roofing bid, the fiscal year '26 budget preparation resolution, and the disposal of equipment. We have had the first reading of the board policies. Then, under information, board comments, events, the IASB report. Jim is not here, so we will not have one of those. We will have a seat-all report this evening. There will be a seat-all report. We'll look at future agenda items. We will be moving into a convened session, excuse me, convened in a closed session to discuss employment of employees, five ILCS 120/2C1. We will reconvene and no action will be taken. And then we'll adjourn. All right, so let's hear from our student school board reps.
All right, I'm gonna get, starting out first, all right. Good evening, board. I'm glad to be back and report some good news from our various competitive clubs. Our BPA chapter, Business Professionals of America, had its second-ever regionals these past two weeks. Senior Sidavula, who is on VAGHS, BPA exec, said that re-regionals went very well. We had a lot of people in testing events and even more involvement in presentation and speaking events. We are excited for state and nationals. I myself competed, and I must say that re-regionals has gone a whole lot smoother than last year. Our math team, which had a competition last Thursday, is also doing phenomenal. And they won the candy bar competition at their second meet. Mr. Gustafson, the club's ambassador and liaison, said that VAGHS is on the top quarter for points scored, and our two freshman squads are also in the top quarter. Good luck, mathletes. Our science Olympiad team also shared some similar success. In interview, Ms. Elliott, the teacher liaison for science Olympiad, stated that we have had a few invites already, but we are excited for our home invite in January. At the Palatine Invite that they just had, they got first place in the helicopter event with students Arnav Garg and Jash Patel, sorry if I butchered those names. Overall, the club is going well, and we are really looking forward to the home meet. Moving on, NHS recently joined the annual Hawthorne Toy Drive. NHS members shopped off toys from Amazon and this Nike-Fritz shopping list. We donated over 100 toys. Senior Micah Gatlin, who oversaw our school's involvement, stated that our first time was a big success, and I hope that future NHS boards will continue this tradition. Speaking of seniors, our senior scholarships are officially open for applications. There's 11 apps open this year for graduating seniors. Good luck to all who's applying. I'm sure you'll do great. With these last few months, I want to highlight that Backley Theater's freshmen, sophomore Play the Con was out last weekend and was a great show. Be sure to go and see future plays. That's all from me. Have a happy holidays.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Vernon Hills has recently been celebrating a lot of musical talent. On December 6th, the choir took a field trip to Chicago where they even got to sing on the radio. One of the songs they sang was "Caroling Bells." Joseph Long, a senior, shared that the experience was a great bonding moment and noted that they even got to watch a beautiful sunrise. Additionally, the Holiday Orchestra Concert was last week and featured a lot of amazing songs. Tessa Stobar, another senior, shared that it was awesome and that her mom's favorite song was "The Christmas Can Can." One of her favorite parts was the nice effect of fake snow and the chance to collaborate with the choir. Last Friday and earlier today, the ESP ran a fundraiser for doggy toys and treats. During all lunch periods, ESP staff sold dog toys in order to raise money for pets in need. Fundraisers like this are one of the many things that make VAGHS so great. Our ability to work with our community helps create global citizens and helps bring a smile to everyone's face. Next, at the start of November, The Scratching Post, our school newspaper, and yearbook, took a joint trip down to Philadelphia. Catherine Din, a long-term member of the yearbook staff and co-editor, noted that they got time to explore the city, but also had sessions in which they learned interesting ways to make this yearbook even better. She noted that they liked how they were able to work on spreads in the lobby while also making yearbook friends from all over the world. Thomas Starr, a senior on TSP, added that he learned a lot from the JEA conference on how to improve articles, and mentioned that seeing the Rocky Steps was incredible. Thank you to the board for approving not only this field trip, but all others. Unique learning experiences like this are so valuable, and it's amazing having a board to support students in their passions. Happy holidays to all, and we'll be back next year for more updates.
Good evening, everyone. I'm sure to share some exciting news about the amazing achievements of Vernon Hills students this September, December. Let's begin with the prestigious Quarterly Cougar Class Act Award, an honor given only once in a student's high school career. Recipients of this award have their yearbook photos proudly displayed in the showcase outside of the gymnastics gym, a true testament of their exceptional character. This quarter, we celebrated 16 outstanding recipients, including Isabel Avila, Emily Hammond, Harper Noble, Leah Kim, Ariel Smolov, Lucas Samuel, Kayla Gallegos, Sanai Scarlett, Lea Dominov, Ashley DeCarlo, Mikayu Desali, Grace Devi, Blake Shavalev, Meet Rathad, Sophia Lund, and Lea Phanin. For example, senior Lea Dominov shared that she was nominated by Mrs. Sancho for consistently lending a helping hand in spreading kindness in class. Stories like Lea remind us how fortunate we are to have such exceptional and kind students at Vernon Hills. In addition to this, our peer tutors demonstrated incredible dedication by arriving as early as 7:45 a.m. last week to lead tutoring sessions in preparation for finals. Subjects covered included biology, physics, chemistry, and math. It was incredibly packed those mornings in the arc, reflecting the collaborative spirit and academic commitment of our students. VAGHS students also shine in the arts. This year, 12 talented individuals were recognized as all-state musicians, an honor that celebrates their exceptional talent and hard work. Their names will be shared during the next board meeting, and they will receive a well-deserved spotlight. Lastly, I'd like to acknowledge the tremendous effort that went into principal interviews with Dr. Gilliam, sadly retiring. The five final candidates completed two presentations each and toured the school. It was a privilege to meet them and witness enthusiasm for our community. A special thanks to Mr. Kelly for organizing this event and ensuring its success. As we wrap up this quarter, I want to extend my gratitude to all our students and staff for their incredible efforts. Wishing y'all a joyful holiday season and see you next year.
Good evening. A highlight of last month was LHS's Multicultural Feast, a unique student-led event that showcased the unity of our cultural clubs, including LASSO, Latin American Student Organization, SASSA, South Asian Student Association, MSA, Muslim Student Association, the JCC, Jewish Culture Club, the BSU, Black Student Union, and API, Asian Pacific Islander Club. The multicultural feast was more than just a gathering. It was an immersive experience. Each club contributed by sharing traditional foods, creating a space where students could taste the diversity of our community. From samosas to tamales, each food represented each culture. But the feast wasn't just about food. It was about learning and connection. The cultural trivia brought students together in a lively and educational competition with questions that spanned global traditions, holidays, and historical milestones. The trivia was not only entertaining, but also reinforced the importance of understanding and appreciating cultures beyond our own. One of the most memorable parts of the event was the show-and-tell aspect. Each club prepared a presentation or performance to highlight key aspects of their heritage. Tan Mai, a sophomore who played the tabla, a pair of drums rooted in South Asian culture, said, "It was an amazing experience to share my culture with everyone else who was doing the same. Everyone was having a good time and learning how and learning new things." The multicultural feast highlighted the importance of cultural clubs at LHS for unity and identity. Clubs like SASSA and BSU provide safe havens for students to explore their roots, celebrate their histories, and raise awareness about important issues. Events like this remind us of the power of collaboration and shared humanity. These clubs also give students leadership opportunities and the chance to create initiatives that bring our community together and solve societal issues. Through events like the multicultural feast, we do not only build a more inclusive school environment, but also prepare students to thrive in a diverse world. Happy holidays, everyone.
Good evening. As the semester finishes up, I would like to talk about what senior students have gone through during this whole semester, which is college applications. For many universities, the early decision and early action deadline was due November 1st. For those that don't know, early action is a type of admission process that students can apply under that shows a greater interest in that university, and it means that students will receive their decision faster. It is non-binding, unlike early decisions, but it is still what many students apply under. Early decision is a similar plan. However, early decision is considered binding. This means that students sign an early decision agreement, saying that if they get accepted to the university, they will attend and will have to withdraw their application to other schools. There is, of course, regular decision as well, but many students don't opt in for that. Regular decisions are often not due until January, and students have to wait until February to April to receive their decisions, while EA, early action students, and ED, early decision students, receive their decision in December or January. Maya Anderson, a senior LHS, reported that she applied to a total of 11 schools. She applied a regular decision to some of her schools, but the majority were early action. She claimed that the closer we got to the November 1st deadline, the more stressed she felt. All of the schools she applied to also required a supplemental essay. A supplemental essay is an essay that can be between 250 words to 1,000 words, depending on the prompt. This is an essay that is unique to that specific school with sometimes silly or thought processing questions. Maya also stated that she was able to recycle some of her supplemental essays. That means that some of her schools had very similar prompts, so she was able to use the same essay by only changing a few sentences instead of writing a brand-new essay. Another student, Caroline Mitchell, a senior LHS, applied to six schools. Majority of the schools she applied to were early action, but some of them were rolling decision. This means that universities look at application as they come in and send out the decisions as soon as they are done reviewing it, instead of waiting for a specific date like many EA plans. Caroline did not feel stressed about the November 1st deadline, because she was done with all of her applications by mid-October. Out of her six schools, only two required a supplemental essay, which made it difficult for her to be able to recycle any. As you can see, college applications are a long process and can cause a lot of stress for students sometimes, but LHS tried to relieve some of that stress by having essay-review sessions, as well as having CRC open hours, so students could ask as many questions as they wanted. Us students hope that LHS continues to have those resources in the future, because they are very helpful, and many students like myself took advantage of it. Thank you and happy holidays.
Good evening. With final exams right around the corner, I would like to talk about how students are feeling about wrapping up the first semester. From culminating final projects to traditional final exams to presentations and more, students are preparing for what each of their classes will ask of them this coming week. During this time, stress is a common theme among many students, but it seems to be especially prevalent in those with borderline grades. For these students, these finals will most likely decide their overall grade in the class. That said, there are certain ways that finals can be administered to help maximize student success. For example, in AP Chemistry, the final is set to replace the lowest test grade in the gradebook. Miriam Salemi, a student in this class, says it is both helpful and comforting to know that by taking the final, I will have the opportunity to raise another grade in the class and prove my understanding of the material in ways that I may not have done earlier. Especially this year, with science finals being worth 20% of the overall grade, many science students share this appreciation and recognize the benefit of using the final to boost their other grades as well. Additionally, students have access to many different resources provided by the school to make their finals experience smoother and more successful. For example, tonight at Cook Library, LHS teachers will be present to help answer any final questions from students regarding the material they are expected to know. Senior Evie Potzick expands on the expected usefulness of tonight's session at the library by saying, "In previous years, it's always been very helpful to have teachers from many different subjects in the same place. Normally, in order to get help from teachers, you have to set up specific meeting times that fit into their schedule. And to do all that, just to clarify a couple of concepts, can be pretty tedious." Many students agree with this perspective and find the study session to be a very useful last-minute tool before finals actually begin. In terms of which type of finals students favor the most, many students seem to prefer doing a final project rather than a singular assessment. One student even says, "Doing a final project allows for more check-in points with teachers and other students, so students have a better understanding of where their grade will lie." In the cases where a final assessment needs to be given, students prefer that they are weighted at 10% rather than 15 or 20. Other students even propose that students should be able to decide on an individual basis how much they want their final to be worth, as this would allow those trying to raise their grade to have the largest chance at success, and those trying to keep their grade have the least at stake. In conclusion, although finals can be an extremely stressful time of the year, students understand that they do need to happen and appreciate the opportunity to prove their capabilities. They also know that there is always room for improvement to make this time of year smoother, and students greatly appreciate LHS and Vernon Hills' consideration for their various situations. Thank you and happy holidays.
Outstanding. Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to, let's see, FOIA requests. I'm happy to announce there were no FOIA requests during the last month, so we'll move on to item H, the superintendent's report.
Great, I'm happy to share the following good news for District 128. A VAGHS sophomore, Elizabeth Rowe, placed second in the VFW Voice of Democracy Scholarship Competition. Her essay was on the theme, "Is America Today Our Forefather's Vision?" It was rated outstanding by a panel of judges that included elected officials, community leaders, and members of our Libertyville VFW post. Next, in collaboration with the community, the LHS canned food drive collected 15,439 cans of food, which filled six trucks and delivered them to the township Food Patch Tree. This was the biggest LHS donation recently, and we want to thank the LHS Student Council and everyone who contributed to making this possible for our entire community. Next, on December 7th, District 128 Olympians Alexis Gallegos from LHS and Eddie Beecher from VAGHS competed in the state bowling tournament. Eddie brought home a silver medal in his division, and Alexis brought home a bronze in her division. The following day, Hannah Kreitch at Pathways, Joel Smith from Pathways, Max Zinder from LHS, and Rishi Arun from VAGHS competed in the area basketball skills competition held at Niles West. Winners of each division for the state competition at ISU will be there at Normal in March. Rishi qualified for the state for the second time, second year in a row. Joel and Max took home silvers, and Hannah came in fourth. And lastly, we want to congratulate to all the District 128 students that were selected for the Illinois Music Education All-State Ensembles. Students will rehearse and perform with a guest conductor in Peoria from January 30th to February 1st. This state festival is the highest honor for high school students that the musicians can receive. And all of you will read more about this at our upcoming newsletters. Thank you.
Outstanding. Okay, moving on to the consent vote agenda. These are items that are routinely approved by the board. They were discussed at our December 9th PNP and FNF meetings. It is possible for a board member to ask for an item to be removed from the consent vote agenda so that it gets its own vote. Does anybody wish to do so? There was one question about a change on the minutes for PNP, the start time. So that was resolved, so we don't need to make any changes there. All right, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented?
Hessel, so moved.
Kulkarni, second.
Any discussion? Very good. Roll call, please.
Bethman.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Kulkarni.
Aye.
Very good. The motion carries. We will move on to items for action under employment of employees. Do we need to say anything here, Bryant? There was just one.
Just one item since our PNP.
Very good. May I have a motion to improve the employment item listed? Oh, I'm going too fast. Okay. The problem is I'm giddy with power and I just want to keep moving. Okay, so we have had a motion and a second, so we are ready for a roll call. Oh. Oh.
Motion to approve the consent vote, aye?
Correct. We have to go back to that so that. Employment of employees.
Okay, Drumkey, motion to approve the employment items listed.
Colcarney, second.
And there's no discussion, so we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Very good. Motion carries. Going on to educational tour requests. There were a couple, one for boys lacrosse, and one that's being led by my friend Aaron Wellington, so it's good to see him getting into the mix right away. Yeah. Very good. May I have a motion to approve the two educational tour requests as presented?
Benjamin, I move to approve the two educational tour requests as presented.
Carmichael, second.
Did you get that?
Yes.
Very good. Roll call.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
All right, that motion carries. So now we are going to the Summer twenty-twenty-five Roofing Bid Approval, and that's going to take a little bit of explanation. We did talk about this in committee.
Yes, so the bids came back. There was with two parts, a base bid and an alternate. The base bid came in higher than we estimated, and so we're going to defer the alternate really until next summer. So that'll, that'll decrease the cost because the alternate was included in our summer capital. So at this point, we're recommending toward the base bid, A-one Roofing, was a company we've used for many of our roofs, for the bid amount of one point two six eight million, and to not accept alternate one.
Very good. May I have a motion to approve the Vernon Hills High School Roof Replacement Bid from A-one Roofing Company, Algro Village, Illinois, for the base bid of one point two six eight million, not to approve the alternate one?
Hessel, so moved.
Colcarney, second.
Any discussion? Very good. Roll call, please.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Very good. The next, oh, I shouldn't say very good. I should say motion carries and then move on. Just make it legal. The Fiscal Year twenty-six Budget Preparation Resolution. This we do regularly. I'll let Dan take it.
Just an annual resolution to get the process started for the next fiscal year's budget.
And I have no questions about it. Anyone else? Very good. May I have a motion to approve the resolution to designate Assistant Superintendent for Finance to prepare the tentative budget for the twenty-twenty-six fiscal year for Community High School District number one-twenty-eight, Lake County, Illinois?
Guto also moved.
Drumkey, second.
Roll call, please.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Motion carries. And now we're going on to disposal of equipment.
This is tech equipment that didn't make it for the F and F meeting, so this came in afterwards. That's why it's here for an action item. This is, the tech department roughly twice a year does a fairly large disposal process, and so there's information about what the company that they utilize to dispose of their tech stuff in a responsible manner as well.
And I would like to say thank you to them for continuing to hold that as one of the guiding principles of disposal of electronic equipment. If it's okay, I'll take one second here to say, we do this regularly with a company that recycles e-waste specifically because it's very, very toxic, and so I thought, wouldn't it be nice if we did something for our community? So I went on to Swalco, and then I found out that there's places, several places around the county where you can just drop off e-waste, and it's very easy to do. So, I mean, if at some point some club wanted to do an e-waste day, that would be great, but it's readily available for anybody that would like to dispose of their own e-waste. And you can throw away as many cords as you want, all those old R C A cords you don't need anymore. All right. Do we have a motion and a second? We don't have a motion and a second. Okay, so can I have a motion, please?
Hessel, I move to approve the disposal of obsolete equipment. Benjamin, second.
Carol, roll call.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
All right, that motion carries. Moving on to board policies for discussion. This was our first reading. We did not have any questions in committee. Are there any questions now? Okay, we don't take any action on that one, correct? We move on to.
We'll bring them back in January for our second reading.
Right.
And approval.
And we'll go over it. Oh, there won't be a committee in January, so.
These are combined?
We have canceled the January committee meetings in order to do the superintendent search. Okay.
No, those still come to the board meeting in January. They don't need to go through two committees. They just need to go through two board meetings.
Got it.
Right. Okay, moving on for information, board comments and events. Anybody have anything fun they want to talk about? They've done recently, board-wise?
A few of us went to triple A., which was lovely, and we attended some really useful presentations and got to spend some time both as an administrative team and board team combined. And it was, it's always an interesting time, always a good use of time. I think the more that I attend, the more I realize how to get more out of them, if that makes sense. In the beginning, as a new board member, I wasn't always sure where my time was best spent. And now I feel like I have it down, and we now utilize a tool as a board to make sure there's not too much overlap in the sessions we attend so that we have a variety of things that we're learning about and can bring those back to share within the community.
All right, very good. Moving on to the CEDOL report, Item C.
I'll keep talking. Okay, twist my arm. All right, so we had our quarterly governing board CEDOL meeting back on the fourth, and it was a little bit of a tense meeting. I think we just realized we had more to discuss than we initially thought. But after attending that meeting, I reached out to Becky and Ray and Kelly Hartwig, who is so gracious with her time in explaining some additional information to me. And I have a report here that's a little lengthier than my typical, but it's important that for transparency's sake, for the sake of everyone understanding what's going on within our district with our exceptional students placed within CEDOL, that we, we are fully informing everyone of what's, what's happening. So I will start. Forgive me if this reads like something I'm reading. I am reading. Okay, CEDOL has been in the midst of a fiscal restructuring process for at least the last three years. In addition, this year, CEDOL finds itself unexpectedly in a transitional period with both interim superintendents and an interim C B S O., C S B O., pardon me. From the most recent governing board meeting, here are some key takeaways. In the original F Y twenty-five budget, there were line items that did not include all the expenses in the salary benefits and purchased services. Staffing shortages, while improved since COVID, still have resulted in higher contracting of services, which is more expensive than hiring our own personnel. For the, for the past five years, tuition rates for the member districts, we are a member district, by the way, have been lower than the true costs of the programming contributing to the compounded financial impact. And while a significant portion of the remaining fund balance is able to cover the additional expenses not reflected in the budget, the circumstances noted above, or noted what I just said, require the cooperative to engage in immediate fiscal restructure and a tuition reset to ensure the financial health of the cooperative in the future. So we will see a one-time significant tuition increase of approximately fifteen to seventeen percent next year. That is significant. A tuition restructuring committee is being formed to develop a stable and ongoing plan for tuition cost analysis. Kelly Hartwig, who is in our reading today, there she is. Kelly Hartwig serves on this committee to represent our district, which is set to meet monthly between January and May of this next year, twenty-twenty-five. Additionally, the CEDOL governing board has extended the contract with their interim co-superintendents for a second year. So we had initially approved their stay for a year, and we are extending to a second year, especially as, as we kind of get through this transitional period. And while that number might sound startling, that fifteen to seventeen percent, our district administration has been aware of this and has prepared our fiscal resources to manage this. So while I went to that meeting and I go quarterly, it's really just kind of touching base and checking in a couple times a year. But our district administration has, has known what's going on a little more in depth, well, a lot more in depth than I have. So, you know, whereas I attended this meeting and it seemed, you know, a little blindsiding, they were like, oh, this is not news. So sometimes what they know versus what governing board knows, there sometimes is a bit of a discrepancy. Anyhow, so currently, we have ten students who access CEDOL programs. This low number is due to the fact that we have taken back many services over the years, including most recently, the Education Life Skills Program, E L S., and the Extended Transition Services, which is provided through Transition Pathways, both programs which we are very proud of now that we house them in district. It's important to remember that CEDOL is historically and currently an important option when it comes to addressing the exceptional educational needs for some students with more significant learning needs. And their special education teams, including parents, make placement recommendations for CEDOL services as part of the larger continuum of special education services that our district is required to provide. So with that, I will update you certainly at our next quarterly meeting. And again, I'd like to thank our district administration and especially Kelly. Dan was really helpful in gathering this information, and certainly Becky and Ray. And am I forgetting anyone, Ray? It was, that, it was mostly the four of those folks, so thank you.
Very good. Thank you for taking your time to do that additional task for.
My pleasure.
All right, moving on to future agenda items. There are only a couple of agenda items listed for January. Is there, anybody have anything that they want to add? I'm still looking for the possibility of request for proposals for solar systems. Do we have any idea when that is likely to be an agenda item?
At a discussion we would have had, what we discussed was developing the R F P. in January.
Okay.
So we have to develop it, then get it out on the streets, and then get the results in, so.
Okay.
You know, it'll take a bit of time, but the idea was January was the time to be able to develop it and get it out.
Okay, very good.
My only other question is, any update on the cafeteria? When would be a good time to get that?
Yeah, we can, we can give you an update. Probably not at the January committee meetings.
Because there won't be.
It was a joke. But yeah, we can get you an update, and then especially as it is now kind of kicking into high gear, we'll, similar to previous projects, we'd have a monthly report in there just to give some updates in terms of particularly financial updates and other things related to the project. So yeah, we'll start incorporating those in the future.
All right, at this time, we are done with the regular business, and I would like to move to convening closed session to discuss employment of employees, five I O C S., one-twenty slash two C one.
Second. Hessel.
Slide. Okay, good.
Benjamin.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
A question about this, though. As we leave, are we, are they going to pack up? We'd had the conversation. So you guys are done, right? Okay, so for those of you at home, when we come back to open session, you're welcome to join us, but we won't be on air for that, and no action will be taken. We will go back into open session and then convene the meeting. Okay. Yeah.